Board of Commissioners meeting to order Tuesday, May 3, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. Ann, would you go to roll, please?
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Blazer.
Here.
Twilliger.
Here.
Geisler.
Here.
Dorian.
Here.
Noson.
Here.
Chairman Bone.
Here.
Seven present, zero absence.
Commissioner Twilliger, would you lead us in the invocation and pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, we are thankful to gather our Board of Commissioners together today. We pray for your divine wisdom that only you can provide as we process and determine matters regarding the residents of Midland County. Lord, we thank you for the progress you have provided towards restoring our dams. We also continue to be thankful for the dedication, expertise, and resilience of our Midland County workforce. And we are very appreciative of the employees we honor today as we all collectively work for the better good for all the residents of Midland County. In your heavenly name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for April 19, 2022.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes.
Support. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. We will now move on to acceptance of the bills.
Properly Addressed General Bank Claims Approved for the Weeks of 4/11 through 4/15, $2,179,407.31, with total general fund expenditures $294,034.89. General Bank Claims for the Weeks of 4/18 through 4/22, $828,724.18, with total general fund expenditures $141,184.65.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we approve the bills.
Support. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will pay the bills and move on to today's special program, and that is Employee Appreciation Awards presented by committee members Jennifer Anway, Christina Crawford, Jessica Gilkins, and Michael Yelson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On behalf of Midland County Employee Appreciation Committee and the Board of Commissioners, I'd like to welcome you to the Spring 2022 Employee Appreciation Awards Ceremony. The employee appreciation program was established in 1991 to recognize employees who go beyond their normal job duties. Along with my fellow committee members, I have the distinct honor of introducing you to some of the incredible employees of Midland County. For those of you who are being honored today, please come forward after your nomination is read aloud to receive your award. Cody Dorland with the Emergency Management Department. Cody was hired in November to fill the role of the Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator. With only two months in the position, Cody found himself running the emergency management office alone for eight weeks while the department head was off due to a medical leave. During this time, a few large issues came up that Cody had to handle: immediate relocation of all stored PPE supplies and relocation of the emergency cats in storage. Cody handled both of these issues very well and timely. This, in addition to already scheduled meetings that needed to be held, keeping projects going that had already started. Cody took on these challenges with a can-do attitude and got the work done. We are grateful to have Cody as part of the Midland County team. Great job. Slacking on my clicker duties here. Julie Baker with the Health Department. Julie always assists colleagues and clients alike. She's knowledgeable in so many aspects in the vaccine department, computers, charting, and billing. Most of all, she's always willing to help and direct things. Julie seems to be a leader who truly takes pride in her work and follows through in everything. She seems happy with all she does, and Midland County is fortunate to have her here. Carrie Carey. Carrie serves in the Health Department as one of the vision and hearing technicians. She's friendly with the children and able to explain the procedures to them in a positive way. In fact, I'm going off script here. I sit in the office right out here, and I have had the pleasure of listening to her for the last couple of weeks next door, and she does a really good job relating to each of those kids on a one-on-one basis. She's truly able to relate to the children on an individual level and basis. Carrie is cheerful and positive to work with. She makes the vision and hearing screening experience fun and very accurate, as is demonstrated in her work. It's obvious also in her beautiful smile. Keep up your great work, Carrie; it does not go without notice. Shelley Kroski. Shelley has professionalism with providing immunization to a broad range of clientele. She is very intelligent and competent, also is a great multitasker. Her coworkers appreciate her efficiency in running reports, assisting with inventory, and ordering vaccines. She's helpful and kind to others. To quote her nominator, "We are lucky to have Shelley, especially for child immunizations." She is the best.
All right, Brandy Allensworth, JCC. Brandy has assisted in establishing protocol and procedure for all three shifts of her 24-hour facility. Brandy has been in the forefront of training staff, establishing and implementing policy, and leading by example in serving youth and families. She has been exceptionally flexible with her availability and has maintained a willingness to lead and shift that provides to be the best in the interest of the building. One of Brandy's most recent and significant contributions was leading the way for introducing a new case management and data storage software to our facility. She's immersed herself in learning the platform and has spent a tremendous amount of time and energy toward assisting our staff and familiarizing them with the program. She is a true value and a leader at the JCC. She clearly invested in her work and is ensuring the safety and well-being of all the staff, as well as the youth we serve.
Hi, Brandy, on Facebook Live.
Next, we have Michelle Brickell. She's also in the JCC. She is the motor and the brain of the JCC. She plays a role in nearly every function of the building and is a tremendously helpful resource to all employees. Michelle is an incredibly dedicated and hard-working individual who always places others first, who always finds an answer to any of the countless questions that come her way each day. She always ensures that we at the JCC are cooked with everything we need to provide services to the youth and families. Michelle is truly an appreciated manager of the things, JCC, and a wonderful support Next, we have McLean Dahl, also known as Mac. He's taken the fast track to a full-time employment with the JCC and filled a very crucial shift in our building. Since his hire, Mac has spent a great deal of time and energy educating himself and others on best practices and ensuring that he is up to speed on what is best for our team. He is incredibly quick study, who has thrived to sustain his increased workload. Mac picks up extra shifts, covers crucial hours, and is always willing to provide an extra time and effort to ensure that his coworkers are not burdened. Mac has exceeded expectations for a newer staff member as viewed as a leader on the weekend staff. Due to his genuine approach and welcoming demeanor, Mac is universally respected by his coworkers, administration, and by the youth that we serve. The JCC is thankful to Mac for stepping up and helping the entire team consistently. Next, we have Wendy Thomas. Yeah, all right, all right. Wendy wears hats, more hats, in one day than most will in a career. Youth development worker, teacher, tutor, mentor, and coach are just a few of the many roles that Wendy fulfills for the Midland County youth every day. Wendy dedicates many hours, often off-the-clack, toward planning special events for our kids and working with them through many challenging situations that life brings their way. Wendy's methods and motivation are truly unmatched, and it shows very clearly through her accomplishments and triumphs of the youth she serves. Wendy's relation with our JCC kids is like no other. The youth look to her for encouragement, guidance, and support. She celebrates our kids' victories and holds them accountable for challenging themselves. The youth and staff are unbelievably fortunate to have Wendy on our team. Thank you, Wendy, for your dedication toward enriching young lives and pushing our youth and team to be better each day.
We have Brett Ireland from Mosquito Control. Even though Brett had made the decision to retire this year and not come back, he decided it was more important to borrow his retirement a couple of months to aid the mosquito control in getting it up and running and train his replacement. He has always been a member of the MMCA and has taken the role in training all new technicians every year, including the current. Midland County and the Mosquito Control Department are very thankful for all your efforts, Brett. We have Angela Green, Quam Lowell, Lexie Leiderman, Patty Only, and Pam Shudart. The COVID-19 pandemic has had a massive impact on our healthcare workers by increasing the risk of psychological distress. Burnout is a prolonged response to chronic emotional and interpersonal stress on the job. This incredible team of nurses and medical assistants struggled and worked through the entire pandemic. They had all came together as a team, even though at many times it seemed as if it would never happen, the daily struggle for them and their families. This team of nursing professions came together to give constant and consistent quality care to our residents of Pinecrest. The nurses worked many hours of overtime over the past two and a half years, and many of them without getting a vacation as there was no staff to cover them. The nurses and the MA worked together to keep the staffs, to keep the shifts covered, and oftentimes in creative ways covering for each other while keeping the residents cared for. The residents at Pinecrest have many needs, medically and emotionally. Pinecrest serves a population of frail elderly, developmentally disabled, and mentally ill individuals. The pandemic was hard on our residents, too, as they were being isolated in their rooms and had to have shifts in the dining room. Residents were unable to have anyone except the staff being able to visit them. This situation made the residents very anxious and impacted the staff as the behaviors and needs of the residents increased. Yet staff did not increase, and the nurses worked through this, too. Words cannot express the pride and gratitude we all have for this team.
Our next recipient is Mary Cromwell from Equalization. Over the past 10 years, Mary's nominator has been inspired by what a hard worker she is. Her attention to detail is unmatched. Mary acquired a skill early on in her career that has surpassed most directors of equalization departments throughout mid-Michigan. When necessary, Mary has been able to question herself and ask others for direction on the proper way to handle the process and procedures in property tax administration. Sorry, that's a bit of a mouthful. Let's see. The assessing software used in this field of work is updated on a monthly basis, and legislature can often change and impact the way daily tasks must be processed. But yet, Mary has been able to keep up with these changes and process the assessment roll, millage rollback calculation, millage rates, and she does so with incredibly incredible To Mary, we say thank you for your diligence and your many years of service. Thank you, Mary. Next recipient is Elizabeth Mudd from the Health Department. Elizabeth has been asked to do so many things by so many people that have not been her responsib... She's had to do so many things that aren't her responsibility, all while working in two different desks and wearing different hats. She always takes care of everything she is asked. Even with all the challenges presented by the COVID pandemic, she is sincere with everyone and has a wonderful attitude, very calm demeanor, never complains, and gets the job done. Oftentimes, she has done this with many hours of unexpected and unanticipated overtime. To quote the nominator, "Elizabeth is top-notch." Thank you, Elizabeth, for your continued service to Midland County. Our final nominee is someone from my office, Prosecuting Attorney's Office, Jeff Reddick. I'll try to get through this without breaking up or anything, but I can't make no guarantees at this point. Jeff Reddick has been a true inspiration to the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. He has an incredible wealth of knowledge, professionalism, and kindness. His genuine concern for his coworkers and cases he works on are second to none. To quote his nominator, "I could write four days about Jeff, and he deserves this award more than anyone we can think of." But a better way is to do it from here, from all of his coworkers. So I'm going to read some of the statements that were provided in support of Jeff's nomination. Through very difficult times and challenges, Jeff has been a steady and reliable, calming resource for everyone in the office. His courage, strength, and leadership are inspiration for all of us. I appreciate Jeff for looking out for us even outside of work. He is always inquiring about our families and willing to help and offer information and advice about things, work and non-work related. Jeff is known to go above and beyond to do what is right in a case, to ensure the victims' needs are met, and to get an outcome that he believes is fair. His character is unsurpassed, both personally and professionally. Jeff is a true leader and mentor. Jeff has been a cornerstone for all members of the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. When Jeff returned to work, regardless of what's going on in Jeff's life, he always tries to make sure everyone around him is better. He has helped every single person in our office become a better version of themself. He is a true advocate for Midland County. Jeff has gone above and beyond his job and is truly deserving of an appreciation award. Jeff is an amazing attorney and one of the best family men you will ever meet. Jeff is the perfect boss, hardworking, knowledgeable, and the best mentor I've ever had. Jeff is always willing to talk to me or offer advice on a case when I would ask. No matter how busy he was and what was going on with his own caseload, he was gracious to take time to speak with me. I am so thankful I have had the privilege of meeting Jeff Reddick and getting to hear the stories and wisdom from him. He has always had an open mind, an open door, and willing to take on all questions. Truly remarkable attorney and friend. Jeff always has an open-door policy. You can go to him without any concerns or issues about what you're dealing with, and he will listen and work to come to a resolution. He has a straight-to-the-point approach and always been honest with me. He is a great leader and mentor. Jeff always has a helping hand, always an ear for listening, continuously has the guidance and knowledge when needed, and is the best storyteller I have ever heard. I can vouch for that as well. Jeff is also one that can find the humor in every aspect in the office. Our office is a bit different than most others, where we do some serious cases involving some things that happen to people, and Jeff is always, always, always very caring, very careful to balance what we're doing versus the seriousness to the victims and always works for their best interest. Jeff is a dedicated and conscientious employee that works hard through... though is always quick with a smile and with kindness and understanding for others. An example, inquiring and taking interest in how coworkers and their various family members are in the office. Jeff's quick wit and appropriately timed sense of humor are always welcome, comic sense of relief, and appreciated in the office. He always pays attention, always follows up, inquires weekly and even monthly as to the status of how people are doing in the office. That speaks to his heart and nature. As an employee recording to him and one of his coworkers, he makes me feel like I am supported, validated, and valued. He gives me such a warm welcome when I started working here, making it known that I could always come to him anytime I needed, which made me feel very comfortable. He is such a positive person. No matter what he has going on in his life, he is a great leader. That is just a little bit of what Jeff Reddick is. Jeff Reddick, I've known Jeff over 20 years. He is a good friend. He is an amazing attorney. If you don't know Jeff, get to know Jeff. He is an amazing human being.
That's it. Midland County has many amazing employees. You saw some of them today. Thank you all for everything you do. We're proud to have you on our team. We're going to wait a couple of minutes for everybody to clear out, but you don't have to leave.
Sometimes they do pictures.
All fish will die.
Pictures. Sometimes they do pictures.
All fish will die.
Probably because we did the Facebook Live.
Okay, I think we can get started with the meeting, so we're going to move on to public comments today, and this will be public comments on anything that is not on our agenda. Are there any public comments on anything that's not on our agenda? Yes, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Maury E. Hope. I also have my NDO.
What's your... I'll just designate them.
Thank you.
Yep.
And if I'm missing one, I'm...
No problem.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I believe this has something to do with...
The proclamation.
Yeah, which is on the agenda.
That's on our agenda, so we'll be taking this up when we talk about that.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So that's our next line of business. You'll be coming back up very shortly.
Need one more. Just need one more.
I got one extra.
Oh, you got it. You have it.
Unless you didn't get one.
Is there any public comment on anything not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to Standing Committee Report Number One, please, with the resolution attached to it. And I have... I'm sorry. I'm going to say this right now, just so everybody understands. My other job, some people may know I own an insurance agency, represent a lot of the companies. I need to abstain on this vote. It's just the right thing for me to do. So I won't be voting on this, and that is the reason. So Ann, could you read the committee report, please?
Date April 29. Properly Addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the attached resolution urging the state legislature to amend the Michigan Auto Insurance Reform Act to address a reimbursement cap for auto accident victims. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee. I do need a second on this.
Yes. Support. Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A&amp;O Committee recommends the adoption of Item 18-3-22.
Thank you. We have support from Commissioner Noson. So at this point, we'd like to open this up to a public comment on it, on this item. So, and I believe you had your hand up, so you... Okay. Name and address, please.
My name is Hank Long in Flintville, Michigan.
Pardon me?
Dad of 15-year-old wife.
Thank you.
So I own a whole care company in Lake South of Edmondsville. We cover the whole state of bike care, individual bike injury. And I, you know, been here through several weeks, we made discussion in the last committee meeting, and I, you know, from my perspective, I see a major impact throughout the state if something doesn't change at the state level. I realize this is a state-level issue, but I mentioned before, we've been at the state almost every week in the Capitol trying to make a difference in this law and to get this law changed. This is, you know, some of this is a result of a previous law change and I think some unintended consequences of the situation, which has caused pretty... it's caused some impact on a lot of people, similar to myself. Somebody I was in this, I had a spinal pit injury 20 years ago. Most of our clients are similar to me or have less. They need somebody there to assist them. And the state law reduced that amount significantly. So we, you know, this is an issue that affects the local area, including Midland County, including many counties. And a lot of people don't have the voice of the state, but I think it's important that we... and that often say that this is an issue that we're concerned about. And so far, I mean, as a business owner, I've been able to sustain, you know, and continue providing care to most of our clients, but that's not going to last much longer. Maybe a couple of months that we can continue providing. It is a significant loss. We provide, you know, care to people's homes, and we can't continue doing that at a 55% percent of what we're being, which was a care rate before. So we're just asking the committee to, or the commission, to support this and express that this is an important issue and that it is affecting the Midland County and other counties so that they, you know, will hopefully react to this and make a change. They continue, every legislature we talk to says they realize that they need to change and it wasn't safe, and they continue to not, you know, have five or six different bills that have gone forward and never comes out of the insurance. They either go beyond that and need a change, otherwise it's really... There's, you know, people here from Midland County that are in severe impact because of that in 2012 and 2013. I don't think, see the results of it, or isn't the change, you'll see more significant results of that. Any questions?
It's no... We don't take questions. It's just public comment, but thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
You'll get your chance with Commissioner discussion if you read us.
Hello, I'm Carrie Lee. I am a resident of Midland County. I live at 13 St. 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 St.[1753.41] Again, something with the law that is not right. So, we made her an apartment, and I thought, when I brought her home, we would have, of course, I would care. And that's not the case. And this is her care, and the result, the battles we've been through, the mental unrest, taking care of her and trying to explain to her why she can't go home. I don't know why her accident happened, or what the outcome of this will be, but it is very, very necessary. Lancing broke it, and they need to fix it because we're not wishless life on any of you. I, I respect your statement, Mr. Bone, from your reputation. You gotta be like a rock, a hard place between the two. So, that's all I have to say. This is real. This is not people on Facebook complaining or anything. These families need help. I need help. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Next, please.
I'm Maureen Howell. My address is 7001 Andrews Road, St. Charles, but I'm here speaking for people all over the state. I'm with We Can't Wait, which is a grassroots organization started by a woman whose sister was paralyzed, had a high amount of paralyzation. She was able to go on to college and get her doctorate and now teaches about disability down in Texas. And she did that only because of the care that she could receive through our auto no fault. We are a rare state, and many citizens in Michigan don't realize what happens in other states. We have a surgeon, a trauma surgeon, who spoke at one of the senators' coffee hours, and he stood up and he said, "What have you done?" He said, "I came from Minnesota, and as a surgeon, as a trauma surgeon, I would put people back together, young people. We'd do all we could to piece them back, and we'd send them to a nursing home because there is no aftercare." And we'd hear six months later they died of sepsis from bed sores because the amount of care that you get in a nursing home isn't adequate for the catastrophic injury. They are not staffed or provide services that these people need. And I'm the mother of a catastrophically injured son. He was 18 years old, and he went off the road in a single-car accident, crushed his skull all the way around to his spinal cord, broke his neck in three places. Fortunately, he didn't hurt his cord, but he did have a portion of his brain removed. He has pituitary failure. He went on, and he graduated from college point oh-two from summa cum laude. He felt they should have given it to him because of his condition. I said, "No, we're not getting anything because, for free, you have to work for everything." And he's a marvelous, wonderful human being. When he came up, he was still in his three-month coma when they said we had to leave the hospital, and the only place that would accept him was St. Joe's down in Epsilani. And they couldn't take him because our Blue Cross was primary, and they said, "Oh, we don't pay for this kind of thing. We'll pay for a nursing home." And people in our state, "I'm gonna get the lower coverage because I've got good medical insurance," and I was gobsmacked because we had really good Blue Cross. My husband had been a state representative, and it covered anything, broken legs, surgeries. "Oh, we're fine." But they don't cover aftercare. Same thing with Medicare. Doesn't cover aftercare. You don't... When you have someone who's paralyzed, they have to be catheterized every two hours or they have this hypertensive paralysis. They have to have a ball regimen that's very strict. They have to be moved every two hours or they get bed...
Thirty seconds.
And what I'm asking of you is, as a commission, the legislature listens to you. This is what we found out. I'm at the, I've been at the Capitol for a year, three days a week now with my injured son. And they listen to you because you have your finger on the pulse of what's happening with the people that they represent. They can't get to the nitty-gritty like you can, and they are listening to those people who are sending this information to the Capitol. We need your help. This, we're not only here for you, for these people that are hurt currently, we're for future survivors, and we're for all of you because our industry is failing. The best in the U.S., award-winning, is almost gone. And for you and for every time you ride down the road and your children on the road, we're hoping to protect you and have these services available should they need it, and have the miracles that we've had with our children.
Thank you. Thank you for comments. I did forget to mention at the beginning that it's keep it to three minutes or less, so that's my bad. You didn't go much over, so I, that was my fault. So, yes, name and address, please, in three minutes or less.
Thank you, Chairman Boone. My name's Brian Harrison. I live in Rockford, Michigan, but am, again, here working with Kaiser Care, Home Care. First off, want to thank, I know it's, here we are again, kind of a thing for us, but want to thank the Administration and Ops Committee for going through this with a couple, a couple meetings with us on this topic and for getting us here today. And also, Chairman Boone, thank you for your transparency and openness with your recusal, excuse me, hard to say. Totally understand where you come from and appreciate it, and thank you for the work you do. We don't view this as something that should be us versus them versus whatever. It's something I think we would hope all of us could agree, having a system that's sustainable and supportive of those that purchase some form of a policy, should be entitled to something that was in that policy. And so, yes, as we get to maybe some further discussion, hopefully be able to answer questions and be a support. I think the big, the biggest part of the conversation that we've talked about in the past is that the law that was passed in 19, amending the Auto Insurance Reform, or Auto Insurance Act, as we said, there needed to be changes. We understand that there needed to be things to be addressed, but one of the things that was not intended was this fee cap for certain services, one of which being home care, which has driven now our cost of providing care, or reimbursement below our costs of providing care. And so, we're simply looking for a different cap, to put it, to put it simply, and something that could be, again, sustainable in a marketplace to provide folks with the care and support that they should be entitled to in the work and the policies that they purchase. So, so thank you again, you guys. I really appreciate you all. It's been great getting to know you over the last month or so, and hopefully be able to answer any questions on this topic that you may have, and as others have stated, we'd love for you to be a support for the legislature to act. So, thank you.
Brian, thank you. Is there any other public comment? It's one and done. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. No other public comment? Is there any Commissioner discussion? Commissioner Twilliger.
Just one comment. I just wanted to say that I'm pleased that we are taking action on this resolution, and I'm pleased to support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Noson.
Yeah, I, you guys know that, you know, we've had some issues about resolutions, what are the purpose of resolutions, and why are we doing that? I've thought long and hard about this one, and in the end, I'm gonna vote for it, primarily for the reason that you all know that I represent Midland County on MAC and on the board, and I'm looking right now, and it looks like almost, looks like 20 or so other counties have, in fact, signed off on a resolution. And there are counties that, you know, some you would expect, you know, the Wayne, the Oaklands, but you've also got Ogama, Sheboygan. You have a wide range of counties that have signed off on this. The staff and the legislative support that we get through Dina Bosworth and her team at MAC is fantastic on issues, particularly when you start seeing, you know, I don't know if this is a groundswell or not, but I think it's 20 out of 83 counties at this point in time is significant, and it's not something that you need to not deal with. So, and I think that, I think a lot of people have said that the correct approach here is to get the legislature to correct the wrongs. And if there is something that MAC can do through this resolution process, where you see the support in multiple counties, then I'm willing to put my hat in on that and work to make that happen. So, I will be voting for this. Thank you.
Any other... Commissioner Geisler.
If the companies that are involved with supporting the, the person that has been suffered from the brain or a back or whatever it was, if they can't get people to work, do they hire the people's relatives to, and pay the relatives to take care of the person rather than a, somebody that's, that's working as an employee of a company that specializes in this area? Yes?
I'll let you answer the question.
Was that, so, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I, I probably shouldn't have done this.
Yeah, up to you. I don't...
Yeah, I'm not gonna do that. I believe, Bill, what do you think, how do you, how do you think I should handle that? Jim's asking a question, and usually it's up to...
I guess the chairman can address the question as fast as the chairman can. It's unusual for the comments section to question.
Right, right, exactly. So, committee, yeah. Yep. Any other Commissioner discussion?
No.
Mark.
Yes, Commissioner Snyder.
So, this is a tough one for me because I've read a lot of the facts on it, and I've heard the stories, and a lot of times when this type of legislation's passed, then you see some new creative solutions, and that's what I wanted to see, is some new creative solutions. But we haven't, so I'm on the fence about, about this. Of course, I don't want to see anyone not taken care of, but I believe it was passed for a reason as well, so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner discussion?
I didn't get my question answered.
We don't, we don't answer, it's Commissioner comments. It's, we don't...
Well, my comment is, I think that, I think that they do get, they do pay the...
I think family members can be reimbursed and paid.
Right.
Yeah. Yep.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, that is the end. Let's call roll, Ann.
Commissioner Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
No.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
No.
Glazer.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
It's Dean.
Okay, so, we have four yes, two no. Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys, all for your involvement, everybody that's been here through these meetings. Committee Report Number Two, please.
Dated April 29th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the agreement with Relia's LLC for the provision of training software for youth development workers at the Juvenile Care Center. The term of this agreement is from April 1st, 2022, for a five-year period. The first year cost is $8,345.87 and includes a one-time setup fee of $3,000. Annual renewals are $5,345.87 per the agreement. The 2022 budget includes adequate funding for this agreement. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A&amp;O Committee recommends the adoption of Item 36-4-22.
Is there any public comment on this item? Any Commissioner discussion? Commissioner, Commissioner Dorian.
Ryan Graffas is here from the JCC. Would you like to, can we call him up and have him sing for us supper on this, explain some of this to us?
Ryan, you wouldn't mind?
Yep. The Relia's Training Software is a, it's a multifaceted platform that we can use that not only has canned training programs that are available to our youth development workers that would include a wider range of topics such as CPR, mental health training, substance abuse training, and trauma training for kids, but it also allows us to customize trainings. We have a wide array of experience within our building, be it a 25-year veteran since the building opened, or brand-new folks hiring in. And because of that, some folks have received trainings on multiple topics over and over again, and it becomes stale after a while. So, we can now customize with the, with the abilities of the software. We can customize training programs to meet the experience levels of each worker. We can also implement our own internal policies and procedures and apply testing measures to assess our employees' retention and comprehension of the material as well and track their progress along the way. Our, per our licensing requirements from the state of Michigan, every single one of our youth development workers are required to receive a minimum of 24 hours of training per year. And so, through this program, not only will they receive that, but they'll also be able to receive things that specialize to their roles, their experience levels, et cetera.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it. Any other discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Commissioner Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Three, please.
Dated April 29th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed the grant agreement between the County of Midland and the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. The term of this agreement is from January 1st, 2022, through September 30th, 2022. This grant provides up to $31,617 for education, communication, and outreach regarding the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. We recommend approval of this agreement, and the Administrator Controller be authorized to make any necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee. Scott Noson, Chairperson Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A&amp;O Committee recommends the adoption of Item 34-4-22.
And Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee also recommends adoption of Agenda Item 34-4-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Commissioner Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes and zero no. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Four, please.
Dated April 29th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, have reviewed the 2023 budget calendar as recommended by the Finance Director. The proposed calendar complies with MCL 141.422 as amended, the state law regulating budgets for local units of government, and is in accordance with Policy 304.1, county budget policy, which was approved on September 6, 2016. The Finance Committee recommends approval of the following budget calendar for the 2023 budget process. June 2022, elected officials, department heads submit budget requests to the Administrator Controller. September 12, 2022, Administrator Controller-recommended budget is assembled and transmitted to elected officials, department heads, and the Board of Commissioners. November 1, 2022, Board of Commissioners adopts general appropriations, resolution, and budget. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson James Geisler, Jeanette Snyder, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 35-4-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Commissioner Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes and zero no. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Five, please.
Dated April 29th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the 2022 road millage renewal proposal and the attached ballot language. The proposed millage language has been approved by civil council, and we recommend that it be placed on either the August or November 2022 ballot or both. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 37-4-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes and zero no. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Six, please.
Dated April 29th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the 2022 Senior Services Millage Renewal Proposal and the attached ballot language. The proposed millage language has been approved by civil council, and we recommend that it be placed on either the August or November 2022 ballot or both. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 38-4-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Commissioner Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes and zero no. Motion carries. We, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the 2022 Emergency Medical Services EMS Millage Renewal Proposal and the Attached Ballot Language. The proposed millage language has been approved by civil council and we recommend that it be placed on either the August or November 2022 ballot or both. Respectfully submitted, Scott Nelson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Nelson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 39-4-22.
Do we have any public comment on this? Commissioner discussion? Ann call roll, please.
Commissioner Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes and zero no, motion carries.
Committee report number eight, please.
Date April 29th, properly, Russ, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the 2022 Midland County School Resource Officer, SRO, Millage Renewal Proposal and the Attached Ballot Language. The proposed millage language has been approved by civil council and we recommend that it be placed on either the August or November 2022 ballot or both. Respectfully submitted, Scott Nelson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Nelson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 40-4-22.
Is there any public comment on this? Commissioner discussion? Ann call roll, please.
Commissioner Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes and zero no, motion carries.
Committee report number nine, please.
Date April 29th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the 2022 Spongy Moth Suppression Millage Renewal and Increase Proposal and the Attached Ballot Language. The proposed millage language has been approved by civil council and we recommend that it be placed on either the August or November 2022 ballot or both. Respectfully submitted, Scott Nelson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Nelson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 41-4-22.
Do we have any public comment on this? Commissioner discussion? Commissioner Nelson.
Yeah, just a couple of points here. First of all, if those of you who don't know, spongy moth is gypsy moth. That is the new term, the well-accepted, publicly accepted term for the previous gypsy moth. Number two, this is, all the others were renewals, this one is an increase and it's definitely warranted. We're looking at probably spring, three times as many acres this year as we have previously. So it's a, a significant issue and we think that that's warranted for an increase. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ann call roll, please.
Commissioner Dorian.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes and zero no, motion carries.
That is it today for our standing committee reports. We have no RPCs. We have no old business. We do have one item of new business. I'd like a motion to bring up. Support. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Okay, Ann, would you read our item of new business, please?
Date April 29th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. I recommend approval of the Attached Proclamation declaring May 1 through the 7th, 2022, as National Correctional Officer and Employees Week. Respectfully submitted, Scott Nelson, District Number 7, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Nelson.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, well, I recommend adoption of Agenda Item, as soon as I can get back to it, 42, 42-4-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Any commissioner discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Okay, we will approve the, approve the item of new business and we're going to move on to commissioner comments. And we're going to start with Commissioner Snyder today.
No comment.
Commissioner Glazer.
Yeah, I just want to express my appreciation for the folks who have come to speak in behalf of the proclamation. I know it's an emotional, sensitive issue and I think that we've taken the right action on it. I trust that the legislature will reexamine what's going on and, and make whatever corrections are necessary. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Twilliger.
Yes, I just wanted to comment that I always enjoy employee appreciation and this was as special meeting as it is every year. And glad that we take the time to honor these employees. And by the time they've been here, well, almost everyone does get honored. We have great people working here. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Geisler.
No comment.
Commissioner Dorian.
Echo both Commissioner Glazer and Twilliger's comments and also hope that the Midland County taxpayer sees generous enough to grant us all of our millage requests. Be a much better county if that does happen.
Commissioner Nelson.
Yeah, just, I also want to thank all those that showed up and presented. It was impactful for me. And I will tell you my commitment is to work with MAC on the Board of PAC to make sure it gets the attention it deserves. Thank you.
And I will just remind everybody today is the Midland Area Community Foundations Give Local, so if you have, this is the great day to do it where there's matching dollars and so donate to your favorite charities and nonprofits. We're going to move on to commissioner meeting schedule now and we're going to start with Commissioner Snyder again.
Are we going up to the 17th?
We are.
So tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock, I have Parks Commission meeting. On the 5th, I believe we have LAPC meeting, the Law Enforcement Center at 1:15. On the 9th, there's a Village of Sanford meeting. On the 10th, I have Edenville Township, Geneva, and the City of Coleman. I will be attending one of those. On the 11th, they have Jerome Township. And the 12th, the Road Commission at 3:00. That's a time change from 9:00 a.m. On the 16th, there's a Peace Officer Memorial. That's always something I like going to. It's at 4:00 p.m. at the Law Enforcement Center. And then Warren Township at 6:30 that evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Glazer.
Yes, tomorrow, the 4th, at 6 o'clock, I have Parks and Recreation here and followed by Porter Township when that meeting is over. Monday, the 9th, I have Human Services, 2 o'clock here. And then in the evening, Lee Township at 7:00. On Tuesday, the 10th, I will be attending a board determination from our Drain Commissioner. I don't recall the name of the drain or that's being proposed, but that will be held at Lee Township at 7:00, Lee Township Hall. And then on Wednesday, the 11th, at 6:30, Jasper Township will have their board meeting and then that's all that I have until our next full board meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Twilliger.
Yes, on May 5th, this Thursday, I have Recovery Court, which is the new term that we're calling Drug Court as of our last Corrections meeting. So I'm glad that they sort of, it's, it's a more positive statement on that group. And additionally, right after that, I have Region 7 Agency on Aging. On May 9th, I have both Mount Haley and Ingersoll that evening. And on May 11th, I have Midland Township. And on May 12th, I have Pine Crest. And those are all in person at separate Region 7, which is a Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Geisler.
A and O will be meeting on, at 2:30 p.m. on May 10th in the first floor conference room. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Dorian.
Human Services is scheduled to meet at 2:00 on Monday, the 9th, in the first floor conference room. And when was, Jeanette, when was the Law Enforcement Center?